Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First on the, or next on the agenda is approval of minutes for the last council meeting. And I believe we just have one set tonight, correct?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the last council meeting.
Ready? Motion by Tom, second by Nancy. You do a roll call.
Greg Van Leer.
Hi.
Nancy Levitt.
Hi.
Chris Gerald.
Hi.
Tom Pato.
Hi.
David Winters.
Hi. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Morgan, you indicated that we might have public comment this evening.
Yes, I've had a request to speak from Marlene Regal from Hair Magic.
Marlene?
Did I say it right, Marlene?
Yes.
So if you'll approach the podium, state your name and address and what you'd like to see, would you like to speak about parking?
Marlene Regal, and I own Hair Magic Salon at 38 North Washington Street. I also live there because I have two apartments upstairs and my tenant is with me this evening. And I have an apartment downstairs as well. So there's three of us living there and we have been, I've been there for 13 years. And when we had the parking, I took my customers' tickets and paid them. Because you don't want your customers getting a $25 ticket to have their hair done and they're spending sometimes a hundred dollars or more. Not having it since I lived there. I'm probably going to get winded because I've had pneumonia and the more I talk, I kind of get out of breath. There's a lot of people that live around the square in these upstairs apartments. And right now I have my sister and my brother-in-law, which is handicapped, living with me. There is no way I can double park and get him in and out of the car. And the people come around that corner on high, sometimes they're on two wheels. They would hit me and God knows what would happen. So that's a big concern of mine. I used to have a handicap parking place there until we redid all the sidewalks. And so that was done away with. I talked to someone, I don't even remember who I talked to earlier about this, and he said, well, there's parking down on the corner. And I said, no, that's private parking. As for that hair salon, the attorney there and, and he said, well, you can park on that street there. And I said, well, one of my girls parked there several years back and she was sideswiped. So nothing is real handy for us. I just want to, you know, I have people come from Elwood, from Perkinsville, and one person from Anderson. They have followed me through all the years I've been here. At times, they'll go down to Mayberry and eat because it's a treat. They won't be able to do that now, nor will they be able to walk the square and visit the other businesses. So I think it's going to hurt all of us that are business owners. They're going to have a certain amount of time and they're going to have to be watching their clock to make sure they don't have to run out with color on their hair and move their car. But this kind of goes in and out. So that's my main concern. And if you are going to enforce it, if you would consider parking passes for the people that live there. The other apartments as well, because I know there's people down on the south side and there's hair salons, there's two hair salons besides myself there. So that's what I wanted to present to you this evening.
So it's your business and you deal with one person at a time?
No.
So you're cutting, you're cutting hair?
I can do a color and I can do a cut. I get the color on, that person's setting for him and I can do one, sometimes two.
I'm just trying to get a number here.
Yeah.
So if you have the most.
But I'm the only hairdresser there.
Sure, sure. So what I'm trying to get is how many parking places? So when you have two people in there, and usually you have two people to take, two, two new clients and they keep coming like that, that's the most you can have. So you need two parking places for them to stay. And then really, when the other clients come, they're not going to be, at the same time they pull out, they're going to need a place to stay. Then you have three apartments upstairs?
Two up, one down. And my son works at.
No, I'm trying to get a number of people, I don't care where they are. How many people total have cars in those apartments?
There's four of us right now, four cars right now.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, so you really need eight spaces.
Well, that comes and goes with the clients too.
No, I know, but.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not going to have eight there at all times.
You know, they're going to be wandering around. And so that's eight spaces that takes up pretty much the side by the courthouse.
I'm on the north side.
Yeah, so, so what I was thinking of is, we haven't talked about that, I just thought about that when you said it. We could have somebody that wanted to do the shuttle service with a off car. People could park in a place and have a telephone, shuttle all the people around and maybe everybody could give them a buck or something. Just thinking about that.
I don't know.
You know, and Disney World has a lot of people, you go out, go out there and then you get a shuttle in.
Well, just like today, or if it's raining or snowing and someone's paid quite a bit of money to have their hair done, they're not going to want to walk to their car, especially if they don't have a umbrella.
Will wants to drive the shuttle. He was telling me.
My son works at FedEx, so he gets home about three in the morning, but he doesn't leave until 2:30 the next day.
So he gets a parking place because it's three in the morning? And then he leaves in the afternoon?
Then he, he's asleep and he doesn't get up and leave until 2:30 in the afternoon.
And you can't park back where Frank says. Parking lots.
That, that parking lot's full most of the time.
Yeah.
Ice, when there's ice in that alley, you can't make up that alley. You can't get up that alley that's in between what used to be Raiders, which is now the dog place, and my, and my business, you can't walk that alley.
I understand. So Barry or Mark, maybe you can answer, how many people we have living in those apartments?
Well, I think there's probably, and there's going to be more, there's going to be more, but one idea would be put angled parking on the west side of that road instead of parallel.
The question is, how many residents do we have living in the apartments or the square? Yes, made sixteen.
And there's two new apartments going into.
And then I got a call from a judge that wants a place. So you have several judges. I mean, there's quite a few people that would take up that whole place. And then people have businesses. No, I'm just trying to think of a, of an answer to that, not an excuse to stop it.
I'm up with this parallel parking on the east side of 38th Street or North Washington Street. Because it was, when I first opened there, it was not that way. And I came to the board and I said, could you make that parallel parking? It's one way. So they did and it added several more, so if we did it on the other side, we could add more as well.
On Washington Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we do have sometimes problems with turning fire trucks in those areas if you block up the road.
I don't know, that would have to be looked at.
Yeah, sure it would be. Well, we're sure, listening to what you're saying and it's all important for you to have your business and for you to live there.
Mm-hmm.
And for other people to have business. So we'll think about that after you take it up some more.
That, because I don't know how long my sister and brother-in-law are going to be with, it's indefinite right now, they've been with me since the end of July. And I have to take him three times a week to Brownsburg for Rocksteady. It's Parkinson's program. And then he has doctor's appointments and he has chiropractor's appointments. And so we're coming and going with a walker quite a bit. And like I said, if I have to double park, there's no way I can take him and get, you know, get him where he needs to be. So that's a, that's a big issue, plus living there is a big issue. And, you know, my customers getting tickets.
Thank you for bringing your concerns to the council, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments tonight, Mark? Okay, moving on to the rest of the meeting here, wishes to be heard, parking on the square, Catherine Haynes. Catherine?
Hi.
Hi there.
Thank you for having me.
Sure.
My name's Catherine Haynes, I'm the court administrator, so I'm here on behalf of the Hendricks County Judges, particularly the four judges who regularly conduct jury trials. We are here, I'm here to ask for, in a nutshell, basically not to ticket on days on which the courts conduct jury selection, which are typically Mondays. And then for some sort of temporary permit or a paper permit for selected jurors, which is what used to happen in the past, a paper permit would be issued, that they'd either put on their dash or from their rearview mirror. And then at the conclusion of the trial, it would have like an expiration date on it and that would be the end of it. But just to give you some numbers. So in 2018, we had, there were 30 days on which we conducted jury selection, 2019, 23 days on which we conducted jury selection. 2020, off year, for obvious reasons, most of our selection was conducted at the fairgrounds. 2021, we're ramping back up to 16. And 2022, we're now really picking back up because we're clearing a bit of a backlog. So I can tell you, and I know that you're beginning to do the warnings beginning on March 1. On March 1, we have summoned in 85 prospective jurors to appear for jury selection on that Monday. And on the 7th, we've got another 70 coming in. So while the employees who have parked on the square when there was an enforcement will be moving off and will park on the, the public lots that are designated, and while we will direct our jurors with a map on the reversal, reverse side of their summons where the public lots are, if we're calling in 85 people in addition to the regular traffic that comes into our building, people are going to park on the square. And it's not uncommon for jury selection for citizens to be called in at 8:30 in the morning and we don't have a jury picked until 12.
Did you say 85 people?
Mm-hmm, I have two juries going that day. I have one in Superior 4, he's summoned in 30 people, and Judge Zelinski has summoned in 55. That's very typical. For a fel, for a felony trial, you're going to summons in about 60 to 85 people.
Need an underground parking lot. Right underneath the courthouse and around everywhere.
Well, we'd be happy to work with you to get that done.
Who's got the money? We need some money.
Okay.
It is a problem then, big problem. I never realized that many jurors came in.
So.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
This has been an ongoing problem, I've worked for the county for 20 years, I understand it. I, I remember the old jurors passes that were issued, they were not issued by the town of Danville. And the reason we did not issue them, we were concerned that when someone was selected as a juror and then there was a display on their vehicle as a juror, that they would be subject to some type of criminal activity. So now whether the courts have issued them, I don't know for sure, but we, we quit issuing those years ago.
Yeah, it's been several years. What we, what it used to be when there was parking enforcement is, I think typically on like the Friday before, we'd have a selection. Usually the bailiffs from the court would email someone in the town and say, yes, it's good, it's a go. We're going to have jury selection, we're going to have this many people in. And then there would just be these white paper tags that they didn't say, we don't want anything that says juror on it, but it would just be a white hang tag. And it would have an expiration date and that's what the jurors would hang on their rearview mirrors.
Talking with the police chief, if a prospective juror or a juror received a ticket, the simple fact was is they just brought the ticket over and it was dismissed. They were never actually charged a parking fee if they came in and showed, if they had something from the court saying, I was here for jury duty. So I don't know that we've ever actually ticketed a juror and actually enforced that fee or that summons, but not that I know of at least. That, that's always been my understanding is if they came over and said, hey, you know, or even if the bailiff collected all the tickets and brought them over to the police chief, they were all dismissed. So it's, it's really, like I said, Blaine couldn't be here tonight, he went home sick today.
So what, what are you looking for from us, Mark, on this? Just, this is just a discussion that we're having right now? Okay.
Ms. Haynes contacted me and asked to be on the agenda. We've had no conversation, she's had conversations with our co-enforcement officer, but I don't believe she and I have had any conversation. I would have been happy to share this with her at the time. Like I said, we have no intent of enforcing on your jurors fines. You have to understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you being here and, because it obviously helps to hear your perspective and the folks that are working at the courthouse. Does anybody have any questions before I? I guess, and I don't mean this in any bad way, I just, I think, you know, we've, we've heard, at least I've heard a number of business owners on the square complain almost on a, on a predictable cycle. And I think, you know, the, the parking lot that I believe you alluded to, which is just south of the museum.
Yep.
I believe that's designated for employees, is that correct?
Two parking lots, one's owned by the town and one's owned by the county, that's actually split and it's preferred for.
It's that, it's behind the, the museum there. And I think, you know, had, had that been utilized a little more frequently than, than on the square, you know, this might have been not an issue. So I, I know that we are going to have discussions on more long-term solutions because I don't think the town's interested in writing, writing a bunch of tickets for folks. You know, it's, it's, but it's, it is, it's a tough balance. Obviously, we're the county seat, courthouse is here, but we also have private businesses that are trying to make a living and we need to try to consider that as well. So I appreciate you bringing your concerns. Sure, we'll have more conversations about it in the near future.
Would like, I'd be willing to sit down with Ms. Haynes and our co-enforcement officer and if we could find a solution that is amicable to them and, and obviously amicable to our business owners, we'll be happy to research it and get to it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. All righty, next on the list, we have Downtown Danville Partnership, the annual report from Ann Johansson. Ms. Johansson, good to see you.
You too, good evening, thanks for having me. I apologize, I meant to have this to you much sooner, but you should have in your packet our annual report for last year. Just wanted to highlight a few things on page four. 2021 was a great, a great year for the partnership. We moved forward in a lot of areas and kind of focused in on our mission and builds, built some relationships that are going to carry us through, I think, the next, next decade and beyond. If, if you look on the right side of that page, you'll see our reach through social media and our email newsletter. The Facebook numbers are significant because this is a brand-new page as of a year ago, so we've built that up. And we have a great, we have great response through our email newsletter, people are, are connecting with us that way and responding to that. We also worked with Ash Interactive out of Brownsburg to launch a social media campaign called People of Danville. They did some great photos for us and videos, so lots of marketing that our businesses can use and that we can use as, as the partnership. And then on the last page, just financial highlights, kind of where our money went. We spent a little more this year. We had some kind of, we, we were able to reallocate some funds from the last two years that weren't used and played to catch up on some things, so that's why the numbers look the way they do. But yeah, we are, we are looking forward to a great year this year. The letter of intent for Indiana Main Street went out at the end of December and that application has been submitted, so as of last week. The next step is a 30 to 45 minute presentation with Okra for the, the program, so that will be coming next. We're working on a new event for St. Patrick's Day on the square, so that's coming up. And yeah, just lots of exciting things on the horizon. Any questions or?
Question for you?
And I have a question.
Keep it up. Greg has a question.
On page four, you indicate followers, reach and visits. Is visits, is that safe to assume that's to your website?
Those are visits to our pages, social media pages.
Greg, could you hear that?
Okay. Yeah, I could. So then, okay, then I guess what's reach?
Is paid advertising that, that people have interacted with us on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you, Ann, thank you. Next we have insurance renewal. Bill Whalen of NFP Insurance is going to present our 2022 annual insurance renewal. Bill?
Good evening. For having me this evening. Mr. Morgan and I worked on and completed renewals for the town of Danville and he asked that I come share those numbers with you this evening. I don't know how much you want to know, how little you want to know, but I thought I'd go through the numbers and then you let me know what kind of questions you have and, and we'll get those answered. We had four policies renewed in February. The first one was the accident and sickness policy for the police reserves. That is with VFIS. And the premium for 2022, 23 stayed the same at $389. The accident and sickness policy, again with VFIS, for the fire department stayed the same this year at $12,751. Cyber is a little bit different story. The cyber policy is with Chubb and cyber right now is probably one of the hardest areas to get quotes on because of all of the claims that have been going on throughout the United States in cyber. We sent this out to four different companies besides the incumbent and all of them came back higher than Chubb did. So your cyber policy, which was last year $4,584, has gone up to $15,002. And as I said, we sent it out to four different companies and they all came in $16,000 to $20,000. We are seeing this across the board. Cyber is just an absolute tough area to place right now. I wish I had better news on that, but that is, that is the way it is unfortunately. The package with Astra, last year, it was at $150,388. This year it is at $162,673. The increase on that, I can give you some numbers here. The increase on that is due to property values increased 2.8 million. Inland marine values increased 428,000. Number of autos increased by three. Number of sewer connections and water connections increased by 234 and population increased by almost 1,200. And that led to the increase with Astra. I also asked them for the loss runs, they sent me loss runs and since, since they've had the policy, we've had close to $190,000 in claims with the town. And I've asked around and they say that's, again, that's pretty much normal for a municipality your size, that that's, that's just going to happen. So with that all said and done, in 2021, 22, with all of those, you paid a total of $168,112. And this term would be $190,815. And that's the, the four policies that I just, just went over with you.
That would also, in the request that we're making tonight is our agent fee, which is $25,000, that hasn't changed, that's been brokered for four years.
Changed, we're, we're keeping that the same.
Mr. President, if I can, just follow up, if you've got, if you don't have any questions for Bill, we do have sufficient funds on hand, we budgeted for this.
Okay.
We take 66% of this out of Edit, which is the liability insurance line item, there's plenty of, to cover it. We take, 18% comes out of wastewater. Again, I looked at his line item, he's got it covered. And 16% comes out of the water department and the line item, he takes it out of. Matt and Tony are here, you guys would agree with that, they're covered, so the funding's there. We, we'd actually budget a little bit higher to, because you never know what, how this is going to come in, so we are in good shape for this.
Okay. Increased?
I'm sorry, we're hurting really bad.
Do you have any questions at all for me?
Questions? Greg, you have any questions?
I do not.
All right, thank you. I do have one sheet that needs to be signed, it's the contract.
Sheet that he'll need.
Okay.
Do you want me or is the council signs it right?
The council signed it, yes.
This will require a vote and the reason being, the claim was written today. If you approve this tonight, Clark's office will get that put out. Is that right, Courtney, you'll get it sent out ASAP?
Okay. Well, with that and no further questions, I will entertain a motion to renew the insurance.
I make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the insurance within NFP.
Okay, I have a motion by Greg.
Second.
A motion by Greg, second by Tom. Courtney, will you hold the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Hi.
Nancy Levitt.
Hi.
Chris Gerald.
Hi.
Tom Pato.
Hi.
David Winters.
Hi. Motion carries five zero. We'll go ahead and do that now, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Just me.
Has it been quiet since the COVID? Has it been quiet out there because of COVID? We're not doing much to get hurt. You go.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. As the saying goes, since you made that comment, checks in the mail.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have ordinance 01-2022, request for super voluntary annexation, public hearing, town planner, Lisa.
Good evening. This was introduced on February 2nd. This is a request for voluntary annexation for three lots. One of those lots has a residence on it, one has an accessory structure and one is vacant. And I have contacted OW Crone to do the fiscal plan and they're in the process of completing that. It is a public hearing, so you'll need to have it open.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public meeting is open for ordinance 01-2022. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none, I will close the meeting, or the public hearing. All right, no further actions needed on this, Mark? Okay. Okay, next up, wishes to be heard, water audit.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear something in the background.
I don't have any audio. I, I heard that. Okay, yep, okay, I'm back in.
Okay. Water audit.
I remember back in 2020, I had to do a water audit, it's every two years. So wishes to be heard is a proposal for professional services to perform a 2021 water loss audit and validation. Westler Engineering is who has been doing that for me in the past. Westler Engineering is who has been doing that for me in the past. Every two years, I'll be up here with this. I believe it's $4,000. I know when we completed it in 2020, I got the information back later that fall. We scored a 58, and he said that was pretty well for a municipality. The scale is zero to 100, but most water utilities fall between 70 and 30. So a 58 was pretty good. I'm hoping to maybe beat that by a few points this year, so.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Anything else? I don't think we need to do anything on this, right?
No, he's got it. An agreement. He's already signed it. The company's already signed it. I'll just attest that it's his signature, if you're okay with that.
Sure.
It's actually not a capital expenditure, that's why I'm not with it, because there's no capital asset associated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for Matt, from anyone? No, okay. Are you up again?
Yeah.
Matt, contract approval, wellhead protection.
Yeah, the wellhead protection plan, we've been doing for many years. We have to visit it once a year to make sure everything is, doesn't need any changes as far as personnel, contacts, well abandonment in the area of our wellhead protection area, or if we added wells or anything like that to expand the area of the wellhead protection. Of course, in the future, we will be adding some wells. So we usually visit once a year, but I believe TAF laws look into it. This agreement will cover us up to the next five years. So we'll do it every year, and then 2026 is when it has to be submitted to IDIM. But annually, they agree we can do that one time and secure for the next five years.
So the reason this goes for the council tonight is not because, again, it's a capital asset. It's because this contract will extend beyond the term of our longest city current council. So as a result, because we want to extend past, which would be you and Greg and Nancy, that's why it has, it's going to require a vote.
Okay.
How do we protect our wellheads?
Making sure the contacts are up to date as far as fire, police, stormwater, signs. Obviously, area will probably be increased due to we'll be pulling more water.
So it's not a physical thing?
No.
I'm not questioning your knowledge or expertise in your field, because I don't know any of this stuff. But I see you use Westler Engineering for two things in a row. Is there, do you send this out to bid, or is it someone we've just used in the past?
Just somebody we've used for quite a few years, and usually it was just an annual expense. So they thought, they sent it out the first time as a five-year. I was like, well, I better look into that to make sure we can even do that. So I know there's probably other engineers that could do it, but I say I've been using, we've been using these for a long time, and I got stacks of binders with their name on them, so.
Right, okay. So are we, I see on page three, allocation of, it's the cost over the next five years, including this year. Are we approving an expenditure for a future year on this? Okay.
And the reason there's no capital expenditure request, no capital asset that we'll be able to ledger and show that this is in our property.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right, looks like we need to take a vote on this, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the wellhead protection for the next five years.
A second it.
Motion by Chris, second by Nancy, Courtney?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you all.
You don't want to stay up? Do we need to sign anything on that right now? No signature? Okay, gotcha. Okay, gotcha, thank you. All right, next, we have capital expenditure request. Crack seal machine. Andy?
Good evening. Before you tonight, I have a capital expenditure request to purchase a crack seal machine. This machine is used to seal the roads up, the roads that are not completely degraded to the point where we can't save them. The roads that are between 10 to 15 years old, that are just starting to crack out, we can seal them up and prolong the life of the road long-term. So I have this for you at $25,000. Last year, when I came before you for the budget presentation, I was seeing a bunch of them at lower rates, but when the time came to actually be able to purchase the item, could find nothing. I did work out a deal with Seal Master. They had one, I believe it was down in Bloomington, and they got that up there, up here, and then they decreased the price by $4,000 to try to get it to us, so.
I got a question.
Yes.
At what point do you stop sealing cracks and repair or replace the road?
In technical terms, it's about a Pazer three or four is going to be a rebuild. So it's going to, the road is not going to be salvageable. There are many roads around town that are like that, and we're really working to go through the community crossing grant, seal them up in different methods to at least extend them a couple of years. But there's really no good answer on that other than completely milling them and patching them or paving them. So I would venture, without having the numbers in front of me, I think we have about 30% of our road system that could be crack sealed. And then we just take that, based on the Pazer rating, we'll block out a section each year and go through and crack seal all that.
Greg, do you have anything? Question? How long did this old one last?
We don't, we didn't have a crack seal machine.
Okay, it said replacement of old, so I was wondering if there was a...
Nope. I did highlight, it has on the form, it's new and replacement, so I tried to do it red for the actual, the new, just so I wasn't printing it, scanning it. Do it all online.
Mark, we have funds for this? Okay. All right. Any other questions?
How soon would it be delivered?
Well, I'm actually going to have wisdom teeth removed tomorrow, and I'll be off until next Tuesday. But I will send an email as soon as I get home tonight and let the salesman know that it passed, and it'll probably be delivered next week. We are, we did do a demo, physical demo where he came out, but it was snowing that day, so there wasn't a whole lot of crack seal that we could put down. And I've used these machines before. The guys in the shop really aren't familiar with them. So I did request that he comes back out in about April timeframe, when it's drying up, where we can receive an in-depth training with that.
Probably can't use it till then anyway, right?
It's hit or miss. Basically, you just have to look at the roads, and if there's a lot of moisture in the cracks, it won't adhere. So it's really wasting money to try to crack seal that area. But every year is going to be different. We're going to try to get out there as much as possible to try to salvage what we do have that is still savable.
Well, I'm in favor of it. If it's not too soon, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve the department expenditure request for this crack seal machine.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion by Nancy and a second by Tom. Courtney?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald. Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, we have come to the end of the meeting. Staff and council comments. Mark, do you have anything? Okay, we'll see you later. Go ahead.
The department heads met Monday, and these were the items that they listed for review tonight. From the planning department, we have a tack meeting tomorrow morning to discuss and review plans for the plan commission. Two variances have been filed for the March BZA meeting. She's collected development acreage fees for the first phase of the Miles Farm, and she's been working with Superintendent Lofton on bond releases for subdivisions. Stormwater department has put a new water heater in the building. I'm sorry, it's been postponed until late last week in February. Working on a drainage project on Macintosh Lane. Schedule started the end of this month. New inspection firm will be starting the 23rd of this month, and Northwood Haven Development has pulled their first five permits. The park director, I said it right, is working on finishing annual small engine and vehicle maintenance, working on Blanton Woods Trail Safety Tree Check, finishing small wall in the DAC for deadlift mat, working on park board packet, planning for lifeguard training this summer, and then looking at options to clean the Blanton House tent. DPW, still a few vehicles being repaired from the recent winter storm. Bright enclosure will be continuing, and they'll be attempting to patch some potholes that have opened around town. On the management side, it does have possible winter weather coming in tomorrow. They're going to watch the forecast. DPW labor interviews were completed last week. Hiring panel made the decision to offer positions to Brandon Huber of Danville and Jeffrey Robinson of Clayton. Both individuals have accepted the offers and will begin March 7th. Finishing the ADA transition plan. All the information's been gathered and hope to have the new plan completed this week. And DPW was informed on February 4th that there was a mistake by the manufacturer in ordering the school crosswalk arms or the barricades, what am I saying here? They're the signals, flasher signals, yeah. DPW received the signs that will be installed on the systems, and the systems have been expedited with estimated delivery of early March. Dr. Schaefer was notified about the issue. DPW will install the systems as soon as possible after receipt, barring any weather delays. Wastewater, Woodland Haven vacuum testing and mandrel pull pair on South Indiana Street, Tradition Lane manhole flushing, rotor bearing maintenance, running new grease lines, running the belt press for three days, doing lift station checks, and finishing up the net DMR. Police department has had 48 applicants for the new hiring process. Testing will begin at the Danville High School on February 26th. Marit Board meeting was held today. They interviewed one full-time officer, two part-time officers, and Officer Wolf has completed Phase Two of the Accident Reconstruction Course, and Phase Three will start in March. Fire department's had 33 runs last week, 233 runs for the year. They've assisted 10 times, had three cardiac arrests, six sick person runs, five seizure runs. Crews have been working on the Hendricks County Rescue Task Force rope training. They took delivery of two new Lucas chest compression systems, and will have them in service soon. Those were purchased by Center Township. And they've also been, put a new hot water heater in at Station 192 at a cost of $4,321. Water department, they're still working with JDH at Kensington Section 3. Valenti held at Northwood Haven on the pressure test, getting caught up on setting water meters for new construction. The weathers had them behind. The high-service pump number three is getting reinstalled at the water treatment plant Wednesday, and I think you got that done today, didn't you, Matt? Okay. And the interview process is still ongoing Monday and Tuesday evenings, and he's been assisted by our utilities director, Lofton. And from the community engagement, she plans on working on the website, our banner program, all the job postings we have. She's interviewing the council president tonight, along with the public works superintendent. She's working on park posts, Facebook page bios for Park Town and Blanton House, and terms of use for the Park and Town Facebook page. And then I have a reminder to the council that the Danville Center Township Public Library, Lauren Malloy, who's been the director of that facility for a while, will be retiring, and there's an open house for him on February 18th from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM in the program room at the Danville Library. And Lauren's been a good friend of the town of Danville, and I'm sure they'd appreciate anyone who would attend. That's all I have.
That's three to five?
Three to 5:30. Yes, sir. Does any of the council have any questions of me?
Any questions for Mark?
Our attorney does have something he'd like to address as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you an update on the wastewater project and the parcels that we're taking for the installation of the sewers. You have the northern and the southern. There are total 39 different parcels that are being impacted. The uniform acquisition officers have gone out on all of them. 12 have been accepted already by the landowners. So at the next meeting, I'll work with Courtney to get the claims prepared, but they have accepted the appraised valuation, so you will have to approve each individual claim to make payment for that, and then we can get the easements recorded and filed. There are nine that are coming up to the deadline, the 30-day deadline, so we may be filing on nine here shortly. There is one that made a counteroffer, and generally, you don't want to really consider counteroffers unless there's a valuation, some basis for which the valuation and the number they're coming back at works. But in this case, the counteroffer was for $154 additional dollars, and so it's a no-brainer to me. Tony, I think, went out there to speak with the owners to show where it's going to go. So it would be my recommendation to approve that settlement for $154 additional dollars, which will bring us up to 13 parcels that we will have resolved. So that's just a quick update. I would ask that the council take action on the approval of $154 additional for settlement on one parcel.
You're wanting that this evening, then?
Okay. If we do that tonight, then I can lump that into the other ones, and then we can get those recorded.
If we don't do it tonight, the carryover cost at his hourly rate will exceed that dollar amount. So I would really prefer it, if you don't mind.
I think he owes us, he missed a few meetings, right?
Because of COVID. Like, I had a legitimate excuse.
Yes, you did. We're glad you're back. All right, so if we were to make a motion, I know there's specific wording that has to be said.
So the wording that I would recommend is that a motion to approve settlement of an additional $154 on the northern wastewater expansion project.
I'll take a shot at it.
Or you can just say so moved.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Nancy and a second by Greg. Courtney?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Chuck. Will, did you have anything? Okay. Okay, cool. Very good.
One other thing Will has been working on, he's being very kind and not saying anything otherwise. We understand we have problems with our current virtual system. Tonight is a prime example. Will is actually looking at a new system called the Owl, and I've actually been to a meeting that has been in use, and it's an impressive device. It'll be posted in the middle of the room. It will actually turn itself to wherever the voices are. So it will sit there and pick up when you're talking, you're talking. It'll be...
How much is it?
$2,000.
It's not bad.
We're going to, the department heads, we talked about it Monday, that we think it's useful enough that we're willing to all chip in out of our budgets to try and make this happen and not ask for any...
Is that both audio and visual? So how, I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask. I know there's occasionally chatter in the crowd. Is it that sensitive that it would...
Is it that sensitive that it would? Gotcha.
Probably has a filter on it.
You know, we, we could have what they have at golf tournaments, when someone's about to tee off, we can have someone hold up a placard that says, quiet please.
Greg get one in his courtroom? Greg, do you want one where you're at?
Greg, did you have any comments?
My only comment was to wish Lauren Malloy a happy retirement. He, he has been a good steward in our community for a number of years and wishing, wishing the best.
Mark stole mine. I was going to comment about the plan commission, but that's all right. No, that's okay.
Tom?
No, nothing.
Chris? I just wanted to thank Mark and Will for their work on the new HR director position, or whatever we're calling it. I think that's an important step to help the administration of the town, so thank you for that.
Actually, we're looking at putting them in this conference room back here. That way they're isolated from.
I understand.
Any influence.
All right, claim docket is next. I have a motion.
The claim docket.
A motion by Nancy, second by Chris. Courtney?
Greg Van Leer.
I see the mouth.
Aye, sorry.
There we go.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald. Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye, motion carries five zero, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Nancy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That pass for you? Motion carries five zero, we are dismissed.